Okay, you're on listener.
Okay. Okay. Hi, everybody. Welcome to our meeting tonight. We were hoping to try something new, where you would have been able to see all the councillors, but we have some technical difficulties, so we're not able to do it tonight. We're going to try to get everything worked out and perhaps by next month that will be working. Meantime, we'll start with the public question period. No questions were emailed in. At the moment, I have two questions in front of me. Anonymous, "Hi, when will the meeting begin?" Answer, it just did. That brings us to our second question, also from anonymous. And it's addressed, well, all questions have to be addressed to me, but they want an answer from councillor El Fassi. So, question is, can councillor El Fassi, please let us know what his connection to the apartment at 5785 Coats St Luke Road is? Okay, so I'll ask councillor El Fassi if there is a connection. Go ahead and enlighten us all.
The owner of 5685 Coats St Luke Road is a company that owned by Ilan El Fassi, has zero relation to Leon El Fassi. We share the same family name, period. Zero, nothing whatsoever between me and Ilan El Fassi with regards to that property.
But wait a minute, you mentioned 5685. The question actually says 5785.
I'm sorry, I meant 5785.
578, okay, perfect. I thank you.
I hope that's clear. And I don't have a problem. They can, whoever, they can call me or they can ask again publicly. No issue whatsoever. They can call and ask, no problem.
Okay, I thank you. That's a very good answer. And that brings us to the end of our questions. So we can start with adoption of the agenda. But before we do that, councillor, sorry, councillor Goldwax wants to add a few items to our agenda. So councillor Goldwax, over to you.
Michael, you're muted.
Councillor Goldwax, we don't hear you.
He's muted.
He's live, he's live.
Well.
I see him muted, he's got a little...
I am unmuted now. I'm not, I've got fifteen windows open at the same time. I'm trying to pull up the, the package. If you bear with me.
Give everybody a hint, there will be three whole items added to the agenda.
Yes. For whatever reason, it's closed on my computer. One second. I'll trust the iPhone, we'll have to pull up. Just give me one second. There are three items I want to add to the agenda. Five items that I want to be added. Items 6.2 and 6.3. 6.2, the resolution is to joint purchase of insurance to protect the reputation and privacy of elected officials and senior officials and criminal liability insurance in the matters of health and safety. 6.2A is the entente that goes with it. 6.3 is a resolution which the mayor will provide a little more insight, a decree concerning the rules allowing to establish the fiscal potential of the linked municipalities of the agglomeration of Montreal for the purposes of the distribution of urban agglomeration expenses, a legal action taken by the city of Beaconsfield. And the last item is 10.4, which is a resolution to mandate the STM to carry out a group's call for tender for the supply and delivery of diesel and biodiesel for the vehicles. Those are the three items that are being added.
Would someone please second that?
I will, Schaefer.
Councillor Schaefer, anyone opposed? No, okay. So now, would someone please move adoption of the agenda as amended?
Schaefer.
Councillor Schaefer, seconded by?
Goldwax.
Councillor Goldwax. So. Okay, one second. Okay, so it was resolved that the amended agenda, the regular council meeting is hereby adopted as amended. Anyone opposed? No, so that's adopted. Councillor Goldwax mentioned that I'll have something to say about the Beaconsfield resolution. Yes, I probably will, but we'll wait till we actually get to that resolution. Then I'll, after we zoom past it, I will try to explain that a little bit. And I'll just mention that the only reason we have these last-minute resolutions is because they all came up literally at the last minute. Two of them were put together today, only today, translated, put together today. And the other one, it was late Friday. So we don't deliberately try to add things at the last second, but if there's a need, then we like to do everything yesterday when possible. Okay, that brings us to departmental monthly reports. And we'll start with councillor Wagensburg, who will tell us what's up with community services.
Good evening, everybody. Once again, it's a short rest report because of COVID-19, but there's a few things that I would, I do have to say. I'm happy everybody's well and I hope everybody stays that way. And once again, and it's going to be continuous this way for a while, still keep yourself protected and, and keep your mask on and keep washing your hands and keep your distance and just stay safe. So the winter registration is ongoing for all online programs. And to date, we have just a few adult fitness classes all running virtually. Our next workshop and our social cultural programs, our next workshop is scheduled for February 14 in celebration of Valentine's Day. It is going to be holding a cupcake decorating workshop. CSR will be hand-delivered the kits to the residents of Hampstead. It should be all, should be really interesting. And again, everything that I'm saying is all dependent upon what happens with COVID. To keep that in the back of the mind. But that, these, these kits get delivered to your homes. You get to do it in your home. Then in collaboration with Defisante, our free family sports day will be held on April 20. That is the tentative date that we're planning on. Again, things could change. This gives the opportunity to all of our residents and family pods a chance to see and participate in most of the programs free of charges prior to signing up, again, based upon what happens with COVID-19. Pool and day camp, the interviewing process has begun for the administration team. For the pool and day camp, names have been submitted for approval. We are also accepting applications for summer employment and the deadline is, is approaching. That's for the pool, the day camp and the tennis. Especially the day camp. Again, this is something that we are working towards in the hopes that we'll be able to do this come the summer. But once again, because of COVID-19, we don't know. Though I do definitely ask that any residents that are interested or residents, children who are interested in being, in working for Hampstead to absolutely get your name. So sorry, I have dogs and they just saw something. I apologize to everybody. Then we have the indoor rental ice time at Montreal West has been suspended because of COVID-19. I didn't know if everybody knew that, I just wanted to make sure they did. Tennis staffing, we're also looking, will be looking to interview shortly for the tennis staff. And we again, look, asking people to, to put their application in. And that's ultimately all of my information from CSR. Everybody just stay safe. And as things change and hopefully things get better and people get vaccinated and things will start to open up and we'll start being able to be a wonderful, you know, friendly community again. So take care, everybody, and I thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Since you brought up COVID, I'll mention a couple of things. I read in the newspaper that 50% of Canadians now know somebody who's gotten COVID. Personally, I know several somebody who have gotten COVID. The good news side is they've all survived it. Most of them without, all except one without going to the hospital, all of which kind of fits with the statistics that I've been reading. But the thing that I think people have to be really careful about is right now, daily cases are going down. Hospitalizations are going down, ICU cases are going down. That's all very good. Vaccines are coming, they've slowed down a bit, but they will be coming, supposed to pick up, I hope so. But in spite of all that good news, what we have to realize is the current daily caseload is far, far higher than it was at the peak of the first wave. So there is a lot of chance of picking it up. And true, a lot of people won't have a bad case, but you never know, it could kill you. So just because number of people, the majority of people are lucky, doesn't mean that everyone is. For myself, I'm not taking chances and I would urge all of you to keep in mind, as you read the numbers and you see things are improving, keep in mind the overall number of daily cases here in Montreal is far higher than it was at the peak of the first wave. It is not the time to get careless. And I, I address that to everybody. Far more younger people are getting it now. So really, everyone has to be careful. And if we all, and finally, there's the issue of the new variants from South Africa, from the UK. These are more highly contagious than the original COVID. Whether they're more, higher mortality rates, not clear yet, but they're definitely more contagious. So everybody is saying, please be careful, be cautious, put up with this for a little longer. Maybe a month would be nice. And then we might see much, much lower levels. Restrictions will be eased and we'll all be much, much better off. Finally, also with respect to community services, nobody knows, we always have to give the caution, subject to COVID restrictions, we don't know, no one has crystal ball. However, it's highly likely that the pool would be open like it was last summer. Rules, who knows for sure what they'll be like, but the pool will be open. Tennis will be open as it was last summer. We need tennis attendants, we need lifeguards, we need people. And if we're lucky, maybe the day camp will be open. All depends on the rules. So people should apply for jobs, especially for the pool and tennis where it's almost certain that we will have positions. But also for day camp councillors, if we don't have enough staff, we won't be able to open it up as much as we would like. So I just wanted to mention that. And let's cross our fingers, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if my, if I'm, if I may add to your first comment, I strongly suggest anybody to go and look for 60 minutes from yesterday. And the first segment of 60 minutes is actually very wake and call, like really wake-up call for the entire population, how little is this pandemic? And I would suggest to look it up.
Okay, I thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to councillor Eddy and finance.
Okay. So basically recap finance. We passed the 2021 budget. Single-family home increases locally is 1.35%. Aglo together is 1.83%. Interest rates, we've lowered our interest rates on outstanding invoices from 12% to 7% in order to help those people who are having trouble making payments, mostly due to COVID. The number of people in arrears has increased. So that's, that's something to keep an eye on. We've also implemented a three-month delay in municipal tax installments. So the first installments will be pushed off till May 18 and the second to August 16th to give people more leeway or more time to make their payments. Again, as a, as a, to help people out with regards to COVID. We're doing this council meeting, we're passing a 1.96 million refinancing. So basically, that's loans that were, were due. It's a five-year cycle and so we're renewing those for another five years. At the same time, we, we are paying down 597,000 of loans as an accelerated paydown. Give you an update on the park fund. After everything is said and done with the PTI for 2021, we're going to be left with $474,000 in the park fund, plus an extra 200 or 300 that's in the pipeline currently. The majority of that money goes to rebuilding completely from scratch, the tennis courts. And as far as overtime is concerned, we're under control. It's a, it's an 18% decrease in overtime between 2020 to 2019. So there's a decrease in overtime by that amount. And also, we're still on a roll with regards to the amount of money that people are investing in their homes. Permits have gone from 2019, 2021, from 98,000 to 125,000 to 582,000, sorry, from 91,251,000 to 582,000. So for the same period, we're, we're like way up. So people are staying home, but they're investing in their homes. And we have to consider that there's people who are solid and who are reinvesting in their homes. But at the same time, there's a segment of the population that's having trouble making payments. So we're going to have to work with those people also. That's about it as far as finance is concerned. I guess I should give an update on where we're at with the new program we're doing, which is the Public Works reorg. We created a committee to that extent, to do a reorganization of the Public Works yard. This is something that's been going on for like the last 10 years, but we're going to hopefully get it finished this year. It's being split into three parts. There's going to be a part that's going to be sold off for townhouses or some such thing. The middle part around the circle will be a green space and the money raised from the sale will be used to offset the, well, it'll be a loan to build a new Public Works storage building. So all in all, it should be, I think as the mayor described it last time, a win-win situation for the town and for the local residents. And that's about it for finance and for the Public Works yard reorg. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and councillor El Fassi.
Okay, so I'll give just a, a short report about tennis. I know Cheryl already brought up a few points, so I'm going to cover the areas that Cheryl didn't touch, which is to do with what just Jack mentioned, the major investment that we're putting into the tennis courts with the water irrigation and the whole resurfacing of the courts. And obviously, the new lights. It's very exciting news. So this is going to happen at the end of this season, meaning at the late September, October, that's when the work will start. And until then, we already have some kind of a timetable prepared by our DG, Richard Sun, where that timetable calls for the items that will be done. So we are ready to go on time for the construction and the work to be done on the courts. And so as you, as I reported before, we had hired the consultant, Mr. Poli, who met already with Irene a couple of times and Richard and, and his meeting with Michel Richard. So things are progressing. And one last item I will add is we're looking for ways to possibly address the reception area of the tennis this year. So we've asked, I know Richard asked Mario and he asked also Ian to come up with the needs. So, I mean, for Ian to come up with the needs so Mario can possibly put something together. Nothing major, it's not major cost, but just to address the reception area where we will answer all the needs of the maintenance, the pros and the, the community, the players when they come in. So that's the short report. And as I said, it's exciting time and I can, I can say, for those who understand, after so many years, we will end up putting the money where it should have been done a long time ago. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Various things are coming to fruition, that's good. Okay, councillor Goldwax.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So a few things concerning Public Works. As my report, there were, from the report that was issued by Public Works, it was recorded, no water main breaks, but unfortunately, due to the severe weather and severe fluctuations, we've had two recent water breaks. One on Aldred and one today on Barron's Court. I will state that due to the quick action of public security, spotting these leaks or spotting the water coming out of the grounds and the quick action of public, so public security and Public Works, there was no damage to the homes. So my hats off to the public security officers who are being very vigil and looking out for this kind of situation, especially when the weather gets, this very, fluctuates very badly in this cold weather to warm the cold again. So hats off to them. Snow, it's been a relatively mild winter. We've had a very similar January, a very similar January with snowfall with about 60 centimeters that's fallen for the month of January, which is what we had last year. But overall, our winter has been a milder winter. The past two storms that we had in January, mid and beginning of January coincided with holiday and weekend periods, which calls for a little bit of overtime, but it was required, but it was controlled. So that's concerning that. We are, all of our equipment that currently is functioning in Public Works for snow removal is functioning very well. We have three new sidewalk tractors which are doing a tremendous job. And, and the crew is quite pleased with their, with their equipment. The next item I want to talk about is we have submitted the orders for our perennials and flowers for the spring of 2021. Although we're on the eve of a snowstorm tomorrow, heading into Wednesday and then of course Friday, they're calling for another low-pressure system. We have to think about looking ahead at the greener, greener pastures, as we say. So we are looking at flowers and beautification, which we have to procure and secure now. Of course, as everyone has talked about, we don't know when the COVID-19 rules and limitations will end. So we will continue to monitor this and plan our Public Works operations with the equipment and the crew and the operations of the equipment with the crew that we have. So congratulations to Eve Vugar Pino for organizing all this, because it is not easy. Concerning IT, I will say that there's a mobile work environment project that our, our IT guru Thierry, who has been working tirelessly for several years, moving devices, people over to virtual station. All that is done. I did report at the last meeting, there was a spam attack. And again, due to the severe, high-level security measures that Thierry has put in place, as I reported, none of your data, the resident's information and data was compromised. We did have some spam mail which we, which had been addressed. But all in all, everything is well under control. We are also waiting for an audit report on our security, of our network security. So I'll be glad to report that when we get that next month, which I'm sure will be a great report. But of course, there's always room for improvement. So I know that Thierry and his, and his expertise will help us, guide us in that. Concerning COVID and seniors, I will like to say that ever since the first admission to the hospital on March 5th of 2020, I've been participating in calls multiple times a week with the CS with respect to the pandemic. And of course, as you know, with the vaccines rolling out, we've been on calls several times a week concerning the role of vaccines. Last meeting, I reported that the CHSLDs received their first dose. And I really truly was hoping that at this meeting, I'd give you an update that they would have received their second dose. Or at least the other residents and seniors' residents would have started on January 20, 25th, which was what the promise was. And of course, that has not happened and the delays are continuous, not only with Pfizer, but Moderna and everyone else. And right now, the latest confirmation is that seniors will not be vaccinated in the centers before mid-February. So the January 25th that was promised to me after two weeks delayed from December will not start till mid-February, providing there's no other delays. I will say that the, if the opportunity arises and you get the opportunity to get vaccinated, please get yourself vaccinated. It will help you and it will help you save the vulnerable relative. I would like to publicly state that I'm truly disappointed with the government leaders and the companies providing the vaccines with the dismal rollout. Canada and Quebec are the laughing stock of the world. As, and, and when I look at other countries and how far advanced they are in the vaccines and the vaccine rollout, very sad that we, we, so little of our population, vulnerable population have yet to be vaccinated. Staff as well. So I'm, until we achieve a time that we get 80% herd immunity, we need everyone to follow directives. I'm happy to hear that our public security are reporting to us that the residents are respecting the curfew restrictions and the limitations that have been imposed. I'm also happy to report that the community service department is still performing the daily calls to our residents of high risks and seniors. And I would like to just close on a couple of points. As the director of the Waldorf, I'd like to say thank you to all of our medical professionals that are working, that live in Hampstead or that you are families of Hampstead residents who are working in hospitals and Q care facilities and all the essential service workers who are providing service to our residents. Your dedication, devotion during this pandemic is, is, is beautiful. I would also like to give a special mention to my Coats St Luke colleague councillor David Torgman, who has been bringing joy to the essential workers with baked goodies and letters from children. He even brought a box of goodies to our Hampstead PSO team. So thank you councillor Torgman. Lastly, as the mayor has spoken about, about we, how so many people are catching COVID and we all, people may know of one or more or many people that have got COVID. As my role at the Waldorf, I unfortunately have seen a lot of people, more families being touched by COVID. And I witnessed firsthand the effects that has had on seniors and the vulnerable populations. And I know many individuals who have caught it and survived. And I know many who have passed away, including two of my very close relatives. So I'm going to ask everyone to please, please, take a moment out of your busy lives and call one of your family members, a parent, a grandparent, a sibling, an aunt. Just as the other doing, send him a card, send him a letter or just call him, tell him you love him. It'll mean the world to them. Trust me. Wash your hands, wear masks, social distance and please stay safe. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much councillor Goldwax. Councillor Buttoning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As councillor Wagensburg said, the community service department is in the final, is in the early stages of interviewing summer staff. I believe that the interviews have concluded for pool manager and day camp councillors, all of whom are returning from last season or the summer before. So welcome back to all of them, we're really happy to have you on our team. Other than that, it's been relatively quiet. It's been only a month so far. But as councillor Goldwax had mentioned with regards to information technology, IT department has been working very hard to maintain the remote work environment. With regards to urban planning, there were eight permits that were issued this month and two inspections that were done. So things are starting to get off to a quick start. That being said, I just want to wish our urban planning department a successful and productive year as we had last year. And hopefully, things will be smooth and people continue to invest in their properties. Other than that, as ever... Other than that, as everybody else has been mentioning, certainly, we recommend everyone to keep safe, especially the youth in the community. Please, please do your part to make sure that the other members of the community are safe. And just as a quick thing on youth engagement, I'm not sure if councillor Wigginsburg had mentioned it, but there currently is a winter snowman or snow sculpture competition that's currently ongoing. So the the parameters are, especially with snow coming tomorrow, residents should take a picture of any snowman or snow sculpture that they've created with their family and email it to recreation@hamstead.qc.ca. And on Sunday, February 14th, the winner will be announced and the grand prize will be a family seasons pass to the pool in 2021. So it's an exciting opportunity for community members to get involved and also take advantage of one of our best services that we have, which is the pool. Other than that, stay safe, stay healthy, and we will see you around next month.
Warren, if I could just make a suggestion that people, if they build these snowmen, they should make them in Hampstead Park.
There's plenty of them in Hampstead Park, as is.
I know, but you know, if they build them in Hampstead Park, this way people can see them instead of having them in their backyards.
I hear you. So nonetheless, make sure you take a picture and shoot it off to recreation@hamstead.qc.ca.
Yes, thank you very much. And let's see. I suppose it doesn't really matter whether you do it in Hampstead Park or not, but definitely not your backyard. So it's either the front yard or Hampstead Park, as long as you take a picture, send it in. So Recreation knows who did this. Okay, brings us to councillor Schaefer.
Last but not least, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have the two portfolios of legal and public security. Nothing has changed on in the legal area. Courts are moving very slowly and I have no new cases to report. So that there is nothing more to say about the legal portfolio. As for public security, I wish to point out that our chief of operations has now returned full time. Chief Fitzgerald is has finished his short, his term of illness and he's back full time at work. So I want to thank him for the report that he prepared. He divided same into three sections, one of which is entitled an administration. And I'll read what he has to say. The department is functioning well as the COVID-19 situation is still ongoing. We have completed the basic training of our two new hired auxiliary officers. They learn quickly and are fitting into the team nicely. We have started to encourage the men to take some time off now that we are up to full strength. One officer has now finished his short, long-term illness. As I said, chief of operations Fitzgerald is back full time. I did mention at the last meeting that our new Ford Explorer Hybrid is now fully equipped and operational, and so is our unmarked vehicle. And the previous unmarked vehicle, which we had, which is a Kia, was returned during the week of January 25. On the operational section, the residents are becoming used to the new regulation from Quebec regarding the curfew. There has been very little activity after 8:00 PM. Ongoing support between Public Works and Public Security in regard to snow operations, it seems to be getting better year, year to year. Pool inspections were completed with many infractions being issued. The project will continue to be monitored. As the highlights for the month, there was one break enter at the rear of the house and the police were there for a while. One vehicle was restored, was reported stolen, another broken into, but nothing else can be stated at this point in time about those two incidents. And the morale of the public security continues to be high and preparations will start soon for additional defensive courses as well. I don't want to be redundant, so I don't want to echo the comments of many of my fellow councillors about social distancing, but and wearing masks, et cetera. But I would point out that we should really observe the curfew. The fines are enormous and there's no real justification unless you're performing an essential service. There's no reason for you to break curfew and please honor the present regulations. And that's all I have to report. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I will continue with the agenda. Item 5.0, adoption of minutes. We weren't able to adopt all of them last meeting, so then we have a big batch of minutes to adopt on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer is seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on December 7th, 2020, of and of the special council meeting and the special budget meeting held on December 21st, 2020, as well as of the regular council meeting held on February 11th, 2021, are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And that will bring us to six something or other. 6.1. Scrolling through all these minutes. 6.1. Okay, 6.1. Endorsement of the Declaration of Commitment to Democracy and Respect. On motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the municipal council of the town of Hampstead endorsed the statement of commitment, quote, "Respect and democracy is respecting democracy," unquote. That the municipal council of the town of Hampstead has pledged to support its elected office holders in all spheres of municipal governance and working to enhance municipal democracy and building trust in democratic institutions. And a copy of this resolution shall be conveyed to the UMQ. Anyone opposed? Okay. And the background is the UMQ, the organization that represents most of the municipalities in Quebec, came up with this resolution. They have given that there's a lot of uncivility these days, I guess, in the States, a lesser extent in Canada. They felt that it was a good idea that we reaffirm our commitment. So that's the background. It's being passed probably by just about all the municipalities on the island of Montreal. Okay, it's been adopted here and that brings us to seven, oops, that brings us to.
6.2.
Yeah, you have to give me a minute. It's for some reason, all these are not on my my iPad. I can't find them, I think.
I can read it. These were the additions.
These are the additions. Okay, if councillor Goldwax has them in front of him.
Yes, so 6, 6.2 is a resolution for the joint purchase of insurance to protect the reputation and privacy of elected officials and senior officials and the criminal liability insurance in matters of health and safety, Article C21. The whereas, in accordance with the Articles 29.91 of the Cities and Towns Act and 14.7.1 of the Municipal Code, the town of Hampstead wishes to join the UMQ and its group for the joint purchase of, in quotes, "insurance protection for reputation and privacy of elected officials and senior officials and criminal liability in matters of health and safety," Article C21, for the period of December 31st, 2020 to December 31st, 2025. On motion of.
Schaefer.
Councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Okay, and.
Shall I read to that?
Yeah.
That that the town of Hampstead joins hereby the purchasing group of the UMQ with a view to awarding an insurance contract for the protection of the reputation and privacy of elected officials and the seniors officials on liability insurance, criminal law in matters of health and safety for the period of December 31st, 2020 to 2025, authorizes the mayor and town clerk to sign for and on behalf of the municipality, the agreement entitled, the agreement entitled, agreement for the grouping of municipalities within the UMQ with respect for the point purchased of insurance to protect the reputation and privacy of elected officials and senior officials and criminal liability, insurance matters in the matters of health and safety, C21, close quotes, submitted and attached hereto to form an integral part of thereof as as if recited at length, and it is lengthy on that, so I'm not reading it, Mr. Mayor.
Now, now, don't, don't. Okay, anyone opposed? No, nobody's opposed. And I have read all these earlier. It just can't, they didn't put them on our council package, so they're in different places. So since councillor Goldwax has them, it's good that he read them. The background on this, it's also from the UMQ. Just came to us, I think, this morning. The it sort of goes with the other one to a certain extent. I don't think, I certainly hope that we won't have any need to use that insurance. But it does provide a certain level of protection in cases, I would say, of inadvertent errors on the part of 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 management, potentially even councillors and mayor. So that's good. That's why, again, an awful lot of municipalities will be passing this. I don't believe it gives us any protection from gross negligence, nor should it. Okay, brings us to.
6.3, which is another addition. I can read the resolution. I'm not reading the whereas's. There's too many.
Don't read the whereas's.
I know, I know. So the resolution 6.3 is we added a decree concerning the rules allowing to establish the fiscal potential of the linked municipalities of the agglomeration of Montreal for the purposes of the distribution of the urban agglomeration expenses, a legal action by the city of Beaconsfield. Again, there's a bunch of thereas's, whereas's. I will read the the resolution portion after it is voted upon.
It's proposed by Eddy.
Seconded by Schaefer.
Okay, so proposed by councillor Eddy, seconded by councillor Schaefer. That councillor Goldwax read.
Yes, so on a motion, that is resolved that maître Nicholas Cloutier of the firm McCarthy Tetra will be mandated for this purpose. That this mandate is necessary in the context of the action before the Superior Court in which all the related municipalities are implicated. That an amount not exceeding $5,000 be set aside for the expenses required for this purpose by each of the linked municipalities. That the city door valve be designated to be the point of departure for the payment of fees for the firm McCarthy Tetra for all the municipalities involved in this judicial approach.
Okay, anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, nobody's opposed. I'll try to explain this simply if I can. What's happened is the city of Beaconsfield has launched a court action. They are complaining about the unfairness of what they are having to pay to the agglomeration. Much of what they are complaining about, the town of Hampstead feels the same way. And sometime in the future, depending on how this plays out, the town of Hampstead reserves the right to launch our own court action, should it seem the right thing to do at that point in time. But right now, this particular action names all the other municipalities on the island of Montreal. And while I'm not a lawyer, not totally clear on the implications of that, nevertheless, to protect ourselves and on the advice of our town clerk, Pierre Tap, we feel it is prudent to pass this resolution so that we can be represented in court. One lawyer will be representing, I suspect, every one of the Association of Suburban Municipalities members, obviously excluding Beaconsfield, so that our interests, that they'll be in court and our interests will be protected. It would be very dangerous, I think, and the councillors feel as well, that if we don't have representation. So without commenting on the merits of the Beaconsfield case, except to the extent of saying that should in the future, we want to do something similar, we of course have the right to do it. But for right now, we need to protect our interest and having a lawyer on the file will do this. At the present time, I am expecting that most, if not all, the other municipalities, demerged municipalities on the island will be passing the same resolution. So that's the short explanation. Moving on, we get to 7.1. This is a notice of motion regarding draft by law 1001-7. And it, notice of motion was given by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. That draft by law number 1001-7 entitled by law adopting the zoning by law number 1001-2 will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of by law number 1001-7 and a motion to dispense with the reading of said by law was made. There's no vote on this. And that brings us to the adoption of draft by law 1001-7 and by law modifying the zoning by law number 1001-2.
If I may intervene on the issue of the ice skating with with construction, would it not be more appropriate to include the word ice hockey? Because we're just looking, referring to as an ice skating practice area. But I think the idea with construction, we're implying the installation of boards. So I think I would submit that maybe it should be slightly modified to make reference that we do understand that with construction, that skating area would be, we would be permitting hockey.
Yes. Well, right now, this is the first draft, the final draft.
Saying it now, right. That's why I'm bringing it up at this point.
Yeah, which is fine. And we also discussed already in caucus, the idea of getting rid of the 10 square meter limit on the size. I know that our director general, Richardson, has already sent an email to our head of urban planning requesting that the by law be adjusted in exactly that fashion. As you can see, I'm multitasking. So that that'll be done. As for calling a a a rink involving construction, well, we are talking about a hockey rink in that case. I think that we'll be going back into caucus after this meeting, a brief caucus. We can discuss, talk about that a little more and if necessary, we'll make that change as well. Okay?
Thank you.
All we're passing right now is just the first draft. And as I said, we already know one change. We've seen it all and we already have one change. And and we'll consider making the second change. But most elements of this by law, we all agree on. Okay, so did I ask if if I'm not sure. So a motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy. Is resolved to approve draft by law number 1001-7 entitled by law modifying the zoning by law number 1001-2. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so no one's opposed. We all understand that will be at least a couple of little changes in the draft before it appears. Yeah, before it is passed, when it comes up at our next meeting. Yeah, I'm just looking at the part the councillor Schaefer was talking about. Okay, we'll talk about it a little bit later in caucus. Moving on, we get to 8.1. And I'll just announce each member of council having received a copy of the town clerk deposits, the minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on January 18th, 2021. Council takes note that the deposit is sent in by the town clerk. Which brings us to 8.2, which concerns One Heath Road. On motion of councillor.
Buttoning.
Buttoning is seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the request to authorize for sad modifications of. Schaefer, it is resolved that the request to authorize facade modifications of a, uh, of a detached bi-family dwelling that will be converted into single fa-, into a single family dwelling located at 1 Heath Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on January 18, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Now, okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to whoops, 8.3, concerning 23 Aldred Road. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor?
Schaefer.
Schaefer had the louder voice, okay? It is resolved that the request to authorize facades modifications of a detached bi-dwelling, I'm sorry, of a detached bi-family dwelling that will be converted into a single family dwelling located at 23 Aldred Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on January 18, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed?
No, but I, I think, just to clarify, because I needed clarification myself on the same thing, is that these are duplexes. These are not, uh, semi-detached.
So they are semi-detached. The duplexes are semi-detached, yeah.
Well, no, not like a side-by-side semi-detached. Whereas like two separate homes next to each other, these are duplexes, one on top of the other.
Duplexes are semi-detached.
Right, but they're also du-, semi-detached where it's like one house attached to another house, separate left and right. So these are not left and right kind of things. This is a, a different story. So it's just, it's a duplex. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That is correct. And both of them, I believe, have the same architect. And both of them were deferred for the same reason, but we don't have to go into that. Uh, we have nothing against, um, converting them into single-family homes. Um, but, uh, for various reasons outlined by the PAC, is work to be done before we'll be ready to approve these two projects. 8.4 is, um, 14 North Cove Road. Uh, it was proposed by councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Um, and resolve that the request for an addition on the right and rear yard with a minor exemption to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located at 14 North Cove Road, lot number 2089007, zone RA1-, yeah, the zone RA1 is deferred. Um, uh, there was a minor exemption here and nobody, uh, sent in anything, uh, objecting. Uh, so, but it's been deferred. Um, anyone opposed? No, okay. And the reason it's being deferred in this case, it's not bad at all. It's quite close to where we're going to accept it, I think. But, um, we can't accept a minor derogation without knowing exactly what the project is going to look like and there's still a little bit of work to be done there. So this one is closed. And I expect next meeting, it should be okay. I hope so at any rate. And that brings us to?
10 Lynncroft.
10 Lynncroft. Uh, I'm getting there. Uh, so many pages in these files. Okay, 8.5, 10 Lynncroft. Uh, a motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor?
Goldwax.
Uh, Goldwax. That's better, a louder voice, okay? It is, it is resolved that the request for an addition on the rear yard for the property located 10 Lynncroft Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on January 18th is approved. And this notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to defer the project. The proposed project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, no one's opposed. I do want to mention that the wording there is a little bit misleading. Um, because the, the, the problem is, there, there is no problem anymore. The PAC had no problem with the addition on the rear yard, which is an addition that's going straight up on existing walls. There's no problem there. There was an issue with respect to the entrance area. Uh, a minor issue with respect to the entrance area. The, uh, councillors carefully looked over, um, the, uh, the project, the arguments made by the architect and the owner. And after careful deliberation, we decided that notwithstanding the PAC's recommendation, we felt that certain things were perhaps not obvious for the PAC. Uh, when you're just looking at the drawings, some of the additional information sent to us convinced us that this is a good project, a fine project, and that no further modifications were needed. So that's the backstory on this one. It will be a very nice home, no question. Um, okay, moving on, we get to?
8.6.
10.6.
8.6, 8.6.
Eight, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, 8.6 concerning 98 Thurlow Road. Okay, it was proposed by councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, someone's got, someone is causing an echo here. Uh, so proposed by councillor Budnay, seconded by councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Uh, and resolve that the request for a minor exemption to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located 98 Thurlow Road, lot number 2089441, zone RA1, is approved. And this notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to defer it. Okay, again, there were no, uh, interventions by interested parties, because it's why exemption. Um, anyone opposed?
Can you go over the minor delegation?
Yeah, I, I can, I can gladly explain it. And I was going to mention because the, the PAC said to defer it. When, when the PAC went, uh, when it went through the PAC, the committee said to either allow it if they're going to build on the existing foundations or to defer it and have them set in. So what's currently happening is their house has an existing, a pre-existing extension off the back. If they were to demolish the pre-existing, uh, extension, they would have to move the entire back of the house in, I believe, about five feet. What they're doing is they're maintaining the existing foundations currently on the ground and using that to build up their new, their new wall. So they're keeping the existing structure there, which is why we're permitting the, uh, minor exemption, because they're literally keeping the exact same shape and size and they're using the exact situation that's there. There would have been a prejudice if they had to dig up and pour all new foundations just to reinforce structurally what the current shape exactly is. Uh, it's not extending on that side in any way. So the PAC, when they looked at it, they said to defer it and bring it back if they can't use the existing foundations. If they u-, if they do use the existing foundations, that it should be approved by council. And that's where we're at tonight.
Okay, and, um, yes, that's a very good explanation. I appreciate it.
And, and just to, sorry, and just to clarify, it's very similar, 98 Thurlow, they're using the existing foundations to build up. Uh, 10 Lynncroft, they use the existing foundations on the first story to build up on a second story. So it's the same situation, just a different floor number.
Uh, that, you're taking all the words out of my mouth. You're not going to leave me anything to say here. But, uh, yes, exactly. And just to go slightly further, um, 3 Haversstock's still coming up is another one where they are, it's not exactly the same, but, uh, yes, they're also, uh, doing some building up on existing walls too, I think. And at any rate, um, we have discussed all this. The council has discussed this in caucus and we have decided that, uh, there was a mistake made, I don't know, uh, how many years ago, about four or five years ago, there was a massive rewrite of our bylaws and, um, and we couldn't catch everything. And one of the things that was changed is that building upwards on existing walls was now uh, not permitted if, uh, they were acquired rights and it was in the setback, it had to be pushed in. Uh, but we realized, uh, with 10 Lynncroft, that that's without sense at all. Uh, consequently, we've decided that, uh, in all these cases, we're going to bring things back. We're, we're allowing these minor exemptions and it is our intention to change the bylaw. Um, hopefully sooner than later, so that we won't have to have minor exemptions when people want to build straight up on existing walls. Uh, it's the only real way to do it. So we're going to try to fix the bylaw and we'll have less, it's my exception request. Okay, so that takes care of 98 Thurlow. If I remember, nobody objected. So, okay, good, we're moving on. L2, 8.7, which is 6 Thurlow.
I just, I, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to clarify one quick thing, just in case anybody's concerned that's listening. You, you said that it's the only way to do it, to build up on an existing foundation wall. That's not factually correct. There are structural ways to do it otherwise. But I think that's where the town council and the mayor come in, where we create realistic, uh, situat-, we understand the realities of situations. We're not going to ask a resident to incur about $400,000 to $500,000 of extra structural costs to cantilever walls off by a few feet, as opposed to allowing them to build straight up on existing walls. So I think that it's just important to clarify that it's not structurally the only way, but it's important that your council's sitting here making rational decisions and not just implementing the law because it specifically says something in writing.
Again, absolutely right. Uh, I oversimplified, but you are right. It adds, I'm not sure, $400,000,000, but it certainly adds significant cost, uh, if you can't go straight up on the existing walls. No question about that. And, uh, yes, we don't have to just strictly apply the bylaws without being reasonable. And being reasonable also means we're going to change the bylaws. So we won't have, have this situation anymore. Okay, 6 Thurlow. Uh, on motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the request to authorize facade modifications of a detached single-family dwelling located at 6 Thurlow Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on January 18, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the upper part of the proposed windows on the proposed right side elevation must be at the same level. Uh, the pro-, pose, the proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. No further explanation needed on this one. Um, which brings us to 8.8, 38 Glenmore. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the request to authorize facade modifications of a detached single-family dwelling located at 38 Glenmore Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on January 18, 2021 is approved. As recommended by the PAC, the proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, and that will bring us to 8.9, which is 3 Haversstock, which I mentioned before. I will state, uh, right away that, um, there were no, uh, interventions sent to us about this one. And so, it is proposed by councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor?
Schaefer.
Schaefer, and resolve that the request for three minor exemptions to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located at 3 Haversstock Road, lot number 2089767, zone RA1, is approved. And this notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to refuse it.
Can we, before, before we, uh, go to a final vote on that, can we just have the explanation for why?
Why they want to refuse it?
No, why, why we're, uh, why we're accepting it.
Okay, well, okay, why we're accepting it is because, um, this project actually came to council, I think, 11, nine or 11 years ago. And at the time it was approved. And there were also three minor exemptions. They were approved as well. It was all approved way back then. However, uh, we discovered that there was, um, there were some problems with the numbers in our minor exemption. Uh, resolution did not match the numbers on the plans, uh, that had been approved. So there was a discrepancy there. It's, it's, you have to have a minor exemptions to go with the plans. And we do not know who made the error. Uh, it could have been the town. Uh, there's no way to find out now. It's too long ago. Uh, but the fact is, it could have been the town. So we had to, um, have the architect give us the proper measurements, uh, the accurate, proper measurements so that we could have the notice of motion and so that we could, uh, pass the minor exemptions, which we're doing tonight, I think. And, um, and the other issue that came up is that during those nine, uh, years or so, our bylaw changed. Um, and, um, and so something that would have been legal back then is suddenly not legal. So two of these minor exemptions refer to things where, uh, just the numbers have to be fixed up. And one refers to something where the bylaw changed, the rules changed. However, the third one is underground. You won't see it. Uh, therefore, um, we basically felt it's okay. Uh, but the PAC felt that, hey, it's been nine years or so. It's a different PAC. We want to look at it. We want to give our comments. I think, certainly my view is that, wait a minute. Uh, this has been approved in the past. Uh, just because the PAC changed and time has gone by doesn't give us the right to go revisit the whole thing. Uh, I don't even think legally the PAC has the right to revisit it once it's been approved. The only reason they had to go back to them was because of these errors that could have been made by the town. Consequently, um, I think the council is prepared to now approve this whole thing once and for all. Proper minor exemptions and they can finally go ahead and build their project as now. The caucus, uh, council and caucus has also decided that, wait a minute, after a certain delay, we really should not have to accept the project. If something was approved 10 years ago or whatever time period we think is reasonable, they should have to go start over. Uh, and, and that's reasonable. And we are planning to put, uh, an amendment to our bylaws so that just getting a project approved doesn't mean you can sit on it for a decade or more and then come back and have it accepted. However, at the present time, that's not what our bylaw says. So the fact that the project was approved, uh, it means it's still approved. And in fact, uh, we have no motion tonight to approve the project. It's already been approved. We're only approving the minor de-, uh, exemptions because it's necessary. They have to go with the project. So that's why we're approving the minor exemptions today. Uh, but we're not approving the actual project. It was approved, uh, whatever it was, nine or 11 years ago. And in future, we'll modify our bylaw. But I should point out that this is a really extraordinary situation. Uh, I cannot think of anything else where somebody had plans approved and they came back to us with the same plans many, many, many years later. There was one potential case, but I have been told that that person will be submitting new plans. So it's, it won't apply in that case either.
But, but Mr. Mayor, does, does this? But, but Mr. Mayor, does, does this, I mean, just for the sake of discussion, does this not set a bad example then where you're saying anything that's ever been approved in the past that we should be allowing it moving forward? As opposed to saying, no, you must conform to the current laws? Like you, you got a permit, you got your project approved eleven years ago, but that's not the same laws that are in place today. If you had, if if the city council made a law eleven years ago and our new city council that you currently have as an administration decides otherwise, then you respect the current administration that's presently there. So I think it's a discussion to be had, but.
Oh, well, no, okay.
Another thing also, don't our bylaws, don't our permits expire after a certain period of time? I thought they expired and then they had to be renewed.
There is no permit. The plans were approved, but the permit was never issued. So it can't expire. It's never been issued. So we have a very unusual situation. As for the one bylaw that is now requiring a minor exemption, as I mentioned, it's underground. It's a basement. It's not going to be seen by anybody. So it may not fit the letter of the law, but it does fit the spirit of the law. So that, that's basically the answer to all your questions, I think. But again, we're going to fix this. We will put an amendment to our bylaw so that this type of rare case is not going to happen again. And as I said, right now, there's only one lot that I know about that has been sitting there, that had plans approved years ago and could potentially come back and they could say, well, it was approved. But I've spoken to the owner and the owner tells me he doesn't want what was approved back then. So he's coming back to the PAC with a new proposal. So this is more typical. People don't usually want the same thing ten years later. So it's a very special case. And because of the fact that the administration could have been at fault ten years ago. And for that matter, even the council could be at fault in a sense. I mean, we passed these minor exemptions without realizing they didn't match the plans because that's what the issue is. Okay, any more discussion or can we move on?
No, I think we can move on. I can, the only thing I can say for myself is I don't believe in causing unnecessary undue hardship and and I agree with these minor exemptions. There certainly does seem to be some, some crossing of paths here. And a project was approved previously and it's just sort of reconciling what was done. That being said, in my humble personal opinion, and I don't know if we have any legal means to say so, I personally believe that the project, any project like this, including this project, should go back to the PAC for comments because what may have been approved fifteen years ago, eleven years ago, nine years ago, the surrounding landscape may have changed. And I think the objective of the planning and advisory committee is to take a file and make sure that it integrates within the surrounding neighborhood. So I think that's something that I personally would like to see a file come back. But I don't have a problem with the exemptions. I know that it's a unique situation here.
Okay, so again, I've asked about this. I thought that we would have to approve it again. I was told, no, you can't approve it again. It's already been approved. I, I, as you know, I review the agendas in advance and I suggested, hey, we need, we're missing a resolution to approve the actual project, not just the exemptions. I was told, no, it's been approved. That's it. But should we change the bylaws so this doesn't happen again? Absolutely. I think we all agree on that.
I think that's, and I think that's the moral of the story is this is a unique situation, but we need to learn from it and and evolve. You know, as we say, the, the town's bylaws are a living, living document. They're constantly evolving and adapting. So I think we just need to learn from this and make sure that it doesn't occur again. That's all.
Yep, absolutely right. We, we've learned a lot of things over the years and we've made a lot of adjustments to fix what turned out to be problems. Okay, so just to finish this up. I was re, I didn't quite finish reading it. Let me just go back. So it was proposed by, let's do it over again. You guys remember, it was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax and then seconded by Shafer.
Goldwax seconded by councillor Shafer resolved that the request for three minor exemptions is only by law number one thousand one dash two for the property located three Havestock Road, lot number two oh eight nine seven six seven zone RA one is approved and this not withstand the recommendation of the PAC to refuse it. That considering the special peculiarities of this matter, in this specific case, payment of fees is exceptionally waived. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. And for those wondering why we are waiving the fees here, the answer is because the fees were paid originally and it could have been a, a administration mistake or even a council mistake, if you like, in, in not catching the problem earlier. So we don't feel it's fair to double charge. Okay, and that brings us to nine point one. Approval of disbursements for the month of January twenty twenty one on motion of councillor.
Ederi.
Ederi seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. It is resolved that the disbursements for the period from December sixteenth, twenty twenty to January fifteenth, twenty twenty one in the total amount of one million eight hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty six cents are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? No, so that's adopted. And that brings us to.
Nine point two.
Nine point two. Concordance resolution. So on motion of councillor.
Ederi.
Ederi seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer is resolved that the preamble of the present resolution becomes an integral part of the resolution as if it were, as if it was herewith reproduced in its entirety alone by means of notes in the amount of one million nine hundred and sixty thousand under borrowing by law. It's number seven, 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 nine, seven, eighty and two thousand and six dash forty seven is realized. The notes will be dated February eighth, twenty twenty one. The interest on the notes will be payable semi-annually on the eighth of February and the eighth of August of each year. The notes will be signed by the mayor and the treasurer. The capital of the notes will be reimbursed as follows. Twenty twenty two, two hundred and ninety nine thousand two hundred, twenty twenty three, three hundred and four thousand four hundred, twenty twenty four, three hundred and nine thousand four hundred, twenty twenty five, three hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred, twenty twenty six, three hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred to be paid in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six, four hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred to be renewed. That in order to realize this loan, the municipality must issue notes for terms shorter than the term provided for in the loan bylaws. Seven, 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 seventy nine and seven, eighty. That is for a term of five years as of February eighth, twenty twenty one. As concerns the annual amortization of capital provided for the years twenty twenty seven and following instead of the term described for the annual capital amortization per the said bylaws, each subsequent loan must be for the balance or part of the balance owing of the loan. Anyone opposed?
Yeah, but I'd just like to translate that into simple English. We have a long, a bunch of loans. This is existing debt. And the way it happens, you get twenty year loan, but you have to refinance it every five years. So basically, we're just refinancing the debt for another five year period.
Yeah, I would have said that, but okay. So it brings us to nine point three. Deferral of twenty twenty one property tax installments on motion of councillor.
Ederi.
Seconded, seconded by councillor Shafer. It is resolved that the town of Hampstead is hereby postponing the due dates for the twenty twenty one property taxes to Tuesday, May eighteenth and Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Anyone opposed? Okay, that was discussed earlier by councillor Ederi. Brings us to ten point one, granting of a contract concerning surveillance of reconstruction work for the tennis courts on motion of councillor.
Leon.
Councillor El Fassi.
Not here.
El Fassi, El Fassi.
There he is.
There he is. Seconded by councillor.
Ederi.
Ederi. It is resolved that the contract for the surveillance of the reconstruction work for the tennis courts be granted to the firm Ten Tech for the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars plus applicable taxes. That if the reconstruction work is extended over a period of ten weeks, a fee of one thousand per week plus applicable taxes will be added to the Ten Tech surveillance contract. Anyone opposed?
Can I just suggest we change the word surveillance to oversight?
Supervise, yeah.
Okay. It is oversight, if you like. Fine, anyone opposed to that change?
No.
Okay, so.
There's a reason why, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I, I don't know really, it has to be some kind of a reason why Mr. Foley put the word.
It's, it's just a translation from the French. In the French one, they have surveillance. But in English, it should be oversight. It's not, we're not surveying.
No problem, yeah.
Yes, I think that's the reason. I think in French it's surve. Okay, so if nobody has any objections, we'll just instruct our town clerk to change that to oversight in the English word.
In it, sorry, on his point, in his letter, it says, I here would submit my proposal for the supervision of the reconstruction of the ten, of the tennis court. So the word is.
Should probably be the word then.
Yeah.
Supervision.
It's in his letter attached to the item.
So supervision is the proper word.
Right, right.
Okay, can we all agree on supervision for inversion? Okay, so I'm instructing our town clerk will make that change. Anyone opposed?
No.
No, so that's adopted. Brings us to ten point two.
Grandi. I suggest that we defer this.
Yes, okay, ten point two. Okay, ten point two on motion of councillor. Councillor Shafer is making a recommendation to defer this item and.
You want to read, you want to read it first? If you're going to defer, you have to read it. So say you're defer, what you're deferring.
Well, no, not really. We, we can just defer it. It's, it was to be a granting of a contract for the rebuilding of the Volvo Greater Final, uh, Final Drive. But councillor Shafer is suggesting making a motion to defer it, councillor Goldwax seconding it. Anyone opposed?
No.
No, okay. We spent a good forty five minutes in caucus discussing this item and we feel that, that more work has to be done before we're ready to deal with this. Hey, now.
I, I think everybody should be on mute at this point.
I did unmute them.
Okay, ten point three. Grandi of contract to carry out phase one and phase two environmental studies and his geo technical study on motion of councillor.
Ederi.
Ederi seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the contract for the phase one and phase two environmental studies and the geotechnical study be granted for to the firm Labtor GS Inc. at the cost of seventeen thousand ninety five dollars plus applicable taxes. Anyone opposed? Okay, no one's opposed. I'll just mention this is for the land on which a new public work storage building is going to be built. And legally, we have to do this work. Okay. So that brings us to ten point four, which.
This is the addition, one of the, it is in the new, in the updated package. It's one of the items we added.
Yeah, I think I have it. It has been added. So it's, it's in my package now. So this is mandates to the STM to carry out groups call for tenders for the supply and delivery of diesel and biodiesel fuel for vehicles on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax seconded by councillor.
Ederi.
Ederi. That the council authorizes the town of Hampstead's participation in the group call for tenders for the supply and delivery of diesel and biodiesel for ve, for vehicles. That the town of Hampstead delegates the STM to prepare the specifications and other tender documents to proceed with the group call for tenders to receive and analyze the submissions and to report the results to the participating municipalities. That the town of Hampstead delegates to the STM, sorry, delegates the STM to educate the proposed contracts. You want to post?
No.
No, okay, and that's, sometimes we do these types of deals because we end up getting a much better price by being combined with many other towns. Okay, eleven point one. Approval of the hiring list of white collar student employees for the community services and recreation department. I hear it is. It is proposed by councillor.
Wigan Spur.
Wigan. Seconded by councillor Buttoning. And resolve that the town council approves the hiring of white collar student employees is detailed. On the list from the community services and recreation department, the hiring is subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four two nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, would someone like to, no, we're not there yet. All right. So that concludes our various items and while we were doing this, a number of questions have come in. So we're now in second. Actually, let me see. First, we have other business. Any other business on the part of the councillors?
No.
No, okay, so that brings us to the second question period. A number of questions can come in. Okay, first question from anonymous. Can you please provide an update regarding the studies on, of Coating the Road? Yes, happy to do so. The studies are now all complete. We are, all the councillors have a copy of all the studies. And all the members of our PAC also have copies of all the studies. There is going to be a meeting to, with the members of the PAC to discuss the studies. That's coming up on February fifteenth. And very shortly after that, all the information will be put on our website.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I make a request of either yourself or councillor El Fassi, as I believe this might just be his portfolio? But is it possible that the city can put together a timeframe and a schedule when reports will be released to the public, when the PAC will be reviewing it, when there's going to be a public consultation meeting and so forth? Because I think now that all the studies are done and the information is obtained, I think a little clarity in terms of the timeline and the vision in terms of going about the project would be appreciated by everybody.
Yes, I can prepare that. As long as everybody realizes it's kind of steps without any detailed dates because I just gave you the dates I know. Sorry, to the best of my ability, which is February fifteenth, we have a meeting scheduled for the PAC. And shortly thereafter, it's going up on our website. I don't actually know if the last document has been translated yet, but it should be translated in time. So we just have to wait for those two things. We can't put anything on our website until we have it in both French and English. There'll be one exception. And the SEMA plus traffic study, we're simply going to put up the, the English and French versions of the summary. It's only a page and a half. To put up the entire SEMA plus report. Really, it would not be very useful. But if anyone wants to ask for a copy of it, it's only in French and we're not going to translate to English, but if anyone wants a French copy, we'll be happy.
Are, are we, sorry, so you're saying that we're not going to put the entire French SEMA report on the website? Only the conclusions?
That's correct, but if.
I would, I mean, I would personally, sorry to interject, I would, I would compel the town to just put up the entire report. I mean, I think number one, the opposition to the referendum had a concern about traffic. And I think if everybody looks at the report, it seemed, will seem to quell it. But I think giving them the opportunity to see all the methodology and the research is only open and transparent, in my humble opinion.
You, you've seen the report. I've seen the report. And I think any reasonable person looking at the report will be able to tell that this is not. that this is not understandable.
Yeah, but, but, but for us, I mean, look, I'm, I'm not, not trying to create an argument here, but for us to say what the public will or will not be able to understand is not fair. I think if we're releasing all the reports, just release the reports. I don't understand why it's just a conclusion or a summary. I don't know if anybody else has an opinion, but that's just my comment.
I agree. It doesn't cost us anything. We could just put a link and allow anybody to download it. And if they want to read it, that's their business to read it, but we provide a link to it and let them download it. If it's un, if it's unfathomable, then we'll let people make their own choice as to how fathomable it is.
Okay, and last, I have a majority of council that wants to do it, in which case we'll do it. I don't care. But it's my judgment that for clear communications, you don't make things clearer just by dumping material on people's laps. I think the summary written by the people who wrote the report is accurate. It's very simple. It's easy to understand. I've already mentioned some of the conclusions many, many months ago. And that's in the summary. It's, it's crystal clear. You don't have to look at 100 pages of diagrams and charts and, and stuff that unless you're a traffic engineer, is going to make no sense to you.
So then, so then the Altus report is 154, 145 pages. Are we releasing just the conclusion of that?
No, not releasing the entire report.
Okay, but, but a lot of people that don't understand finance or the methodology behind it may think that that's incomprehensible. So how are you able to say that the public are not going to understand traffic studies, but they're going to understand financial engineering reports? I just think it's, I think it's disrespectful to the public to say you only are entitled to the conclusion because you won't understand anything else. Just put it up.
Okay, it's been some time now that all members of council have had access to all the information that we're planning to put on the website. Nobody has yet said to me, well, 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 I want to see the whole SEMA Plus report. Now, if you guys want to, we'll get it to you in French, but I'm not going to waste money translating it to English when I think it'll be equally incomprehensible, no matter what language it's in. We've translated the summary and I do have a responsibility to be fiscally responsible. So no, I don't want to translate it, but if you want the French version and only the French version up on our website. If I have a majority of councillors telling me either tonight or by email that that's what you want, you will get that. But I'm telling you, I want to have everything as clear as possible. And I think the way we're planning to put it out will be very, very clear. And you've all read the summary. You really think you're going to find something that differs from.
It's not, it's not about trying to find or interpret conclusions. It's about empowering the residents. If the residents are concerned about it, and this has been a very contentious subject matter, and we've postponed the whole decision-making and rezoning process to collect information and reports, then it's incumbent upon us to release the information. No one's saying we need to translate the document into English. We're required to have it done in French. It's Quebec. We'll release it in French. It's no problem. But to say that we're not going to send out the information because it's not necessary is not, it, it's just disrespectful, in my opinion, to the whole process. So I don't know why this is a whole argument because the information is there. It's already been paid for. We own it. It's, it's in our system. Let's just put it on the website with everything else. So I'm one vote. I think councillor El Fassi said yes. Are there two other people that want this up?
I definitely want it up. I, I see no.
So councillor Goldwax, you want one up? Is anybody else? Councillor Schaefer, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Do we only just put it to a vote?
That's what I'm just seeing if anybody, if there's a fourth person. Councillor El Fassi, you're in charge of, you're in charge of this project. Are you, for transparency, councillor Weggensberg, councillor Schaefer? Councillor Schaefer is nodding that he's in favor, but he's on mute. So there you have four, you have four votes. I, I'm just, I'm not trying to create a point of contention here. I just think it's being respectful to the residents and giving them all the information that we have. If we're going to make decisions on behalf of the community, then it's only fair that they understand what we're basing our decisions on.
It's transparency.
Yes, and nobody is more in favor of transparency than I am. So having heard from what you guys want and expressing the view that this is only going to confuse people and no one is going to understand it, we will be happy to include a link to the entire thing. There will be the summary in English and French, and there'll be a little link for people who want to see the whole.
Exactly.
Much obliged. Thank you.
If I.
The link, wait a minute, the link will be on the French side because the report will only be in French. If you want, we'll put the link on both sides, but if it's in English, they'll see the English summary, they'll push the link and it'll say in brackets, French only, but fine, whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's a good.
Okay, stop arguing. We, it's done. You're getting exactly what you want.
That was councillor El Fassi trying to say something.
Trying to say, I'm just trying to say there is no problem. It's a good compromise to put both the summary and the entire report for those who wants to see the report. And that's fine.
Yeah, there's, there's no problem. I just thought that it's, it's kind of, there is such a thing. It's too much information, but I don't care. It's fine. I will give instructions to, to make that adjustment. I have to make sure, I've been making sure that we have all the different pieces of information. We'll have to go find the SEMA Plus whole report and, and make sure that it's ready to go up at the appropriate time. Now, you also brought up the issue of the timeline again. To the extent that I can provide it, there'll be a timeline, but it's not going to go to the very end of the process because in all probability, the end of the process will be for a new council to deal with. This process isn't going to end before the election. But nor can we start putting up, but if this happens, then this, if that happens, then that. We'll try to put something up that is pretty clear. I'll review it with, with our town clerk, maybe even our external lawyer, and make sure that it's as accurate as it can be. And we'll probably put it up at about the same time as we put up all the different studies. But I've told you verbally, next step is the PAC meeting on February 15th, releasing all this other good stuff very, very shortly after that meeting. Okay? Any other things? No? All right. So that was the answer to that question. Let's see. Next question, can you please, anonymous again, they all seem to be from anonymous. Can you please indicate where the link for the demolition committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow will face off? I guess the intention was to say will be.
No, it says will be, okay.
I'm sorry?
It said, it says will be, probably will be posted. You know, on the bottom, it says posted. Look, it continues the next question. Will be posted.
Okay, it's, it's, okay. Where will be posted? Honestly, I don't know.
I will say Thierry already answered. The demolition committee link is on the legal notice section of the public notice demolition committee. So it'll be on the legal notice section of the Hampstead website.
Okay, so that, public notices are on the front homepage of our website. Go to the, to the notice having to do with the demolitions and apparently the link is over there. So that seems to be the answer. I thank you. And that is tomorrow night, by the way. And we will be trying, it's a test, so hopefully it'll work smoothly. But we are going to try to do this meeting using the new way. We're planning to do our public council meetings as well. You should be able to see the various participants all at the same time. And of course, you'll hear anyone speaking, sort of like a Zoom meeting or what have you. That's the general idea. He didn't feel we were comfortable doing it tonight, but tomorrow night, just bear with us. There may be some technical problems, but we'll do our best. Okay, next, in purchasing, point 10.3. Who has been granted the contract to carry out phase one and phase two environmental studies and the geo-technical study? It was mentioned when I read the resolution, but give me a minute. I'll go find it again. It's right here.
There were two firms that bid. There was one for GHD for 22,762 and the contract was awarded to GS, sorry, one second. I just have to zoom in here. It was awarded to Laboratoire GS for 17,000 and change.
Okay, there is a very complete answer. Thank you. Okay. Anonymous again. Release the entire SEMA report for anyone to view. Some may not want to look at the whole report. Oh, sorry, some may want to look at the whole report. Well, okay, that's been resolved by now. We're going to enjoy. And then anonymous, what were the dates of the traffic study? Was it done during COVID when businesses and schools were shut down? What were the dates? It was quite some time ago because I remember I reported the fact that, that we had the results and, and the conclusions many, many months ago when we were still having public meetings with people attending. So therefore, it was not done during COVID when businesses and schools were shut down. It was done when, before that whole period started. So that's the answer to that question. And I'm sure the dates are in the study as well. Okay. And that brings us to, look at AG Bar putting out a summary of the Mueller report. How did that go over? Sorry, not an amicable question. Questions have to relate to, well, items on tonight's agenda, strictly speaking. But even though I often accept questions that go beyond what's strictly been discussed in the meeting, they have to at least be relevant to Hampstead. And I don't think something that happened in the United States is relevant to Hampstead. Okay, that wraps everything up. Would someone like to move German?
Goldwax.
Buddning.
Okay, councillor, councillor Goldwax seconded by councillor Buddning. Anyone opposed? Okay, that wraps up our meeting. I thank everyone for attending. Thank all the councillors, especially all the ones who help me out every meeting. And at this point, we're going to say goodbye. And the councillors are invited to please return to our caucus meeting. We are pretty close defenders, but we'll just have a little post-mortem and discuss anything else we need to discuss in caucus. Okay, so good night, everyone.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.